This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, July 13. So we have a few things to do before what I think you're all here for. But let's start with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Anita.
I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a couple of things for open forum. And first on our agenda is to recognize Kurt Ware. Kurt has been involved in our town and in basically has influenced the building, the design, the construction of many of the buildings and schools and town hall that you see here in the town today. He was a member of the Land Use Priorities Committee. He was also a member of the Commission for Efficient Town Government. But since 2008 Kurt has been a member of the Permanent Building Committee. And that's where he has spent most of his time for the last 13 years. And from the very beginning, he was vice chair of that committee and he continued to serve in that role up until tonight when he is resigning and leaving the Permanent Town Building Committee. He was instrumental in the construction and overseeing the rehabilitation of this building, the senior center renovation, the Abbott School Elevator and Roof Replacement Projects, the Robinson and Day School Windows Replacement Project, the Combined Dispatch Center, the new fire station headquarters, Westford Academy Athletic Complex improvements, and the Roden Bush Community Center. He has also helped to plan and design the two buildings that are sort of just in the design phase, which is the new center building and the conceptual planning for a school administration building. Kurt also served on the Permanent School Building Committee for 17 years and I had the pleasure of serving with him on the Permanent School Building Committee. And he was involved in the Stony Brook Middle School, the Miller School, Crusafuli, Nabnassit School Expansion and Renovation, and the Westford Academy Expansion and Renovation. And just because he didn't have enough things to do, he's also been on the School Site Selection Committee, the Stony Brook Master Plan Committee, the Land Use Priorities Committee, which I already stated, the Library Visioning and Planning Committee, the East Boston Camps Master Plan Committee, 63 Main Street Task Force, and the School Administration Office Site Selection Committee. You've just been an integral part of the development and the construction in this town over the last 25 to 30 years. And without your input and your passion and your guidance, this town wouldn't look the way it does today. The Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee could not be here tonight, but I'd just like to read to you a couple of sentences that he wrote to us and to the Select Board. Tom Hannah, who's the Chair, wrote, "We will miss Kurt's guidance, his passion, his vision, and his experience. I could always rely on Kurt to provide valuable insight on whatever issue we faced and to be the voice of reason when needed. He never hesitated to assist or provide guidance on some of the difficult decisions we faced. It was an honor to serve on this committee with Kurt." On behalf of the town, Kurt, thank you so very, very much. We are entirely appreciative, grateful, and indebted to you for your service to the town. Certificate for you, and I know you have something to say.
Thanks so much for taking some of your very valuable time to remind me of a few of the things that we've been able to accomplish together over a long period of time. It's been a huge honor and a privilege to work together with so many dedicated and hard-working and creative, roll-up-your-sleeve-and-get-the-job-done kind of people, which is characterized a lot of the people that I've worked with on the various committees over these many years. It's been a distinct pleasure that so many of the ideas and suggestions of the committees have been given life by this board here. New positions have been created, new committees formed, critical buildings built, existing buildings have been renovated and repurposed and given new life, and open space master planned. It is my hope that Westford will continue to be a place where volunteers can make a difference, where there's respect for one another's perspectives, and where the goal of all is to do what's best for the town as a whole. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott thanks you too. From the telephone.
Okay, our next item is a presentation of the Girl Scout Gold Award project Invisible Link by Mina Herkawian, who is an Ambassador Girl Scout. And so, Mina? And I think we have your presentation up here, so it doesn't matter, wherever you're most comfortable.
Okay, so my name is Masmina Kowian, and I'm doing my project. It's called Project Invisible Link. So a little bit about the Girl Scout Gold Award. It is the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve. The main part of the project is to identify a community issue that is really important to the Scout. And so from there, they form a team and then lead them, so that they have different people who do different things, but they're sort of like, I guess, the ringmaster, sort of of it all. And so they work together to create a unique solution to solve the issue. And so this award challenges Girl Scouts while it also leaves a lasting impact on the community and also beyond that community. So most important part, I guess, of the requirements, the projects must be original, meaning that the Girl Scout cannot do the footwork of another organization. They must be measurable, meaning that there has to be a measurable impact that the project has, that you have to like, be able to see whether or not it's reached people. And it has to be sustainable, meaning that the project has to live on after the Girl Scout has finished with it. Only 6% of Girl Scouts earn their Gold Award. Go to the next slide. So a little bit about my project. I chose this topic because it's very important to me. I've lived with invisible illnesses since I was four. And when I was picking this project, I thought about what I wish someone would have done for me when I was still in Westford Public Schools. And I realized that my experiences in school and extracurricular activities are very different from those of most of my friends and even the people that are educating me. And I decided to create Project Invisible Link to raise awareness of invisible illnesses and their impact on members of our community and beyond. So my objective is to reduce the doubt from others. Doubt and stigma from other people are one of the hardest things that someone living with an invisible illness has to face on a day-to-day basis. And so my hope is that by speaking out about this issue and creating informational materials, people like myself will begin to be seen. So I've created educational brochures listing some of the invisible illnesses, not a complete list, of course, because there are hundreds. There's a section on stigma, basically some statistics, and I've included quotes from people basically talking about how they feel their illnesses impact their lives and how they've been seen by other people. And I have other promotional materials like bookmarks and stickers and a social media presence on Facebook and Instagram. And I'm currently in the process of creating a video interviewing different people with their illnesses. The point of the video is to focus more on their individual experiences and less on the clinical aspect of their condition, whatever it may be. And so basically, an invisible illness is kind of hard to define, mostly because there is not one clear, concrete definition. It's usually used as an umbrella term for any medical condition that is not easily visible to others. Invisible illnesses can range from chronic physical conditions, autoimmune diseases, and mental illnesses. And so, like I said before, stigma is the hardest thing. There's this idea that if you look fine, you are fine, and it's simply not true. Some of the assumptions that people have is that you are not working hard enough to push through your symptoms. You are making up symptoms to avoid responsibilities, and fortunately, your symptoms are your fault. And I have dealt with all of these, and it's not always what you want to hear. So stigma can do real damage. It can exacerbate symptoms. It creates barriers to success, and it can impact one's identity and self-worth. And stigma can occur in all areas. It can occur in healthcare, education, employment, and even in your personal relationships. And so the answer that we are all looking for is, how can we make things better? First, we need to raise awareness of invisible illnesses. Two of the biggest obstacles for people who live with invisible illnesses are doubt and stigma. We need to learn to approach each individual with a mindful outlook. You can't judge a book by its cover, so you shouldn't make assumptions about someone's health or well-being. We need to learn to correct stigmatizing behavior and understand that everyone has different abilities and limitations. And so last but at least, how can Westford help with awareness? We need to focus on raising awareness in our community. Education is key. We can't address issues that we aren't aware of that exist. Invisible illness impact people of all ages, not just people who are adults. Growing up with an invisible illness is extremely difficult for young children, and this is a really important area that I think needs to be addressed. Professional development is important so that teachers and faculty are aware of such conditions, and then they can understand how to approach each situation in a manner that is most beneficial to the student. We also need to educate children in our school system about invisible illnesses and their impact, so they can understand how to interact with the students around them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Well, so I do know that you've created a brochure about invisible illnesses. So I think it would be helpful if you could tell us, for people who are interested, where they can find that brochure.
Okay, so I have, at least unless they've run out. I don't think they have yet. There's some in the police station, the J.B. Fletcher Library, and the Westford Board of Health section in town hall.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to share what your handle is for Instagram?
Yes, that would be useful. So it's actually on the back of the bookmark and the brochure, but it's pretty simple. It's just @projectinvisiblelink.
Is it a brochure?
Yes, it is.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. I was just wondering if there's anything we can do to help promote and share this work? I don't know, Jody, if this goes maybe in our town newsletter that you do or some of the other places that we can get this out in front of people, because it sounds like a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay, so our final item on open forum tonight is a request from the town manager to confirm the appointment of Mark Chambers as Westford's Police Chief effective July 13th, 2021. So Jody, do you want to just?
Sure. So just to tell you a little bit about the process, our former police chief, Tom McEnany, did retire in January. And so at that time, I promoted Mark Chambers to be the acting chief. So that was about six months ago. We are a civil service town for our police department, so there is a process that we go through when there is an opening. And that starts with the state, the Human Resources Division, and we are supposed to have an assessment center, and we hired a firm to conduct an assessment center. So we had several of our officers put in for that assessment center. And what happens is, once it's completed, then we are given a list of three candidates that scored the highest on that process. So we were given Lieutenant Brian Gendron, Lieutenant Jim Pellaquin, and Deputy Acting Chief, I'm sorry, Mark Chambers. I asked a group of people to help me with a panel to interview those three finalists. And so I had our two Select Board members, Anita and Scott, assisted with that. Our Fire Chief, Joe Targ, Eric Hydaman, Assistant Town Manager, Noel Almeida as a resident at large, Jeff Morissette, our Director of Land Use, and Pam Hicks, our HR Director. So we interviewed those three candidates for about an hour each. And at the end of that process, we took a vote, and the panel unanimously voted to support Mark Chambers being the next police chief for Westford. So according to the charter, which the language is up here, I am the appointing authority, but for police and fire, it's confirmation for the Select Board, so I am recommending tonight that we appoint Mark Chambers as Westford's next police chief effective today.
So we're going to see if they vote first. Wait, we need to vote first, folks? So, pardon?
Andy, can I ask something, Andrea?
Yep.
I mean, as part of that committee, and thank you, Andrea, for letting Anita and I be part of that. You know, Mark did extremely well with the interview, the assessment center. He's been a great acting chief under very difficult circumstances. He absolutely has earned this appointment. I also wanted to recognize the other two officers who applied, because they also did extremely well on the assessment center. They interviewed very, very well. Both of them had no idea, wasn't just applying to be the chief of the department as it is. They had really good thoughts about improvements we could make in the future. So I think the town should be very happy that we've got a great choice for our next chief, but he also has a very solid command team under him that we can feel good about as residents.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to confirm the appointment of Mark Chambers as our new police chief?
So moved.
Make a motion to confirm.
All right. Because, just so I can announce, because select member Scott Hazelton is remote tonight, we have to do all votes by roll call. So John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to the board, thank you for the town manager, the members that participated in the Police Chief Search Committee. It was a very thorough, very long process. I appreciate the board and Jody putting your trust in me to lead this community forward. I've dedicated 22 years of service. I'm here for the long run. I do have an excellent staff. The men and women over at the Westford Police Department are second to none, and I'm very thankful that I'm going to have the opportunity to lead them. And thank you for the support of my family and friends. As you can see here, I'm fine with the professional stuff, which when it gets to the corporate stuff, that gets me, but without their support, I never would have gone for this. So thank you very much to everybody in this room, and thank you for your continued support. I hope to make everybody proud and continue to serve this community to the best of my ability. Thank you. And I would also like to congratulate Deputy Chief Palasquez and Captain Pick, because they'll also assume full-time responsibilities. They've no longer be temporary.
Thank you all.
We need you to get sworn in.
Okay.
Actually, probably all three of them, right?
I can't.
Sure.
Wait a minute. I need a picture of this. Hold on a minute. Where's my?
I need to get on my tippy toes next to these two.
Hold on. Wait, don't swear. Wait, 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 wait. Hold on.
Do you want to stay individually, like I did with the Fire Department?
No, we can do it all together. We're a team here.
Okay, I like that. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as police chief, deputy chief, captain, in the Westford Police Department, according to the best of your ability and understanding, and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Westford, and that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
I do.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, wait a minute. One more total. Move your hands, because your hands were blocking your face. Guys, can you do it again and just put your hands up so I can see your face? Patty, Patty, you too. You got to get in there. All right, here we go. Awesome. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are at our, oh, before I leave, does anybody from the audience have anything for open forum? Okay, seeing none. And does anybody from the board have anything for open forum? Okay. Now we can go to our consent agenda.
We have a lot of people out in the hall.
Okay, we are at our consent agenda, and we have a request to approve the following. Town Common and Bandstand for the Electric Blue Live Music Concert. The applicant is Alessio Berizato. The date is Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. A special license for the memorial for Jean Silver. The applicant is Kevin Mace on behalf of the Stony Brook Fishing Game, to be held at the Stony Brook Fishing Game at 128 Lowell Road, Saturday, July 31st, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And a flag hosting for India's Independence Day on the temporary flagpole at Town Common. The applicant is Nureen Buksamousa, and that is on Saturday, August 7th, 2021.
It is 9:00 to 11:00.
And that's 9:00 to 11:00. Sorry. Okay, it's not there. Good to know.
9:00 to 11:00 a.m.
9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are at Old and New Business. Okay, first item on that is a request from the Healthy Westford Committee to develop a wheelchair-accessible walking path near Edwards Beach on town-owned parcels. And Bill, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. The Healthy Westford Committee has an idea, which is to have a wheelchair-accessible path in the woods over next to Edwards Beach. And the reason I've come tonight is to see if it's okay with the Select Board and also any other comments. Currently, there's no such thing in Westford, no place for a wheelchair person to go into the woods. So this would be the first. It's not a very, oh, here's an illustration of where this would be. If you go into Edwards Beach right now, the parking area is pretty big, but over on the left-hand side is woods. And this is the, we've gotten far enough so that we picked a particular route, and then we could come to the board here to recommend something specific or to describe something specific to you. That's the route that this would be. It'd have one entrance, and a person could go either to the right or the left. Now, what we've done so far is to, well, pick this route, for one thing, and become familiar with this woods over here. We found that it was sort of an unattractive area, and so we're sprucing that up by picking up litter and generally making it look like, by the way, there's a very nice woods just to the south of this, on the other side. You don't see much of it there, but that area is really good and has nice trails, is a very pleasant place, huge trees, really nice. So we're trying to get this other smaller area into be like that, a place where you would want to be, sort of inviting. I'll just add this, that, you know, there's a really great playground just to the right of the parking area, the McEllicott Playground, and it's very popular. And our committee thinks that this also will be popular. It's not only for wheelchairs, but anyone could use it. So we think it'll be pretty neat.
Okay, thank you. Personally, I think it's a great idea. And thank you to the Westford Healthy Community Committee for coming up with the idea to make our woods accessible to folks who are, who have mobility disabilities. I just think, just makes everything more accessible to those folks, so.
Thank you. Good to hear.
I think that's a great idea, and certainly I am fully supportive of this. John?
Is that conservation land?
The first part is conservation land, and we have coordinated that with the Conservation Commission. The back square area is not conservation land, but it is town-owned. And so it's this board that has the, that is the, administers it. Yeah.
Could you describe the process of how you will get this accomplished in general terms? Because it's going to take quite an effort, I would think.
Yes. Right now, it's a walking trail. We decided to go with the first phase of just making it a walking trail, and it is that way today. But then the process of changing it into the accessibility, I don't know how long that will take. There will have to be some earth moving to make a foundation for that and leveling it. It's pretty level already. We picked a route that is quite level.
I hear an Eagle Scout project in this.
I hadn't thought of it that way.
Seriously, you might approach the Scouts in terms of if one of the Eagle Scouts is looking for a project to work on this.
I'll look into that. Does that answer your question, John?
Other questions or comments?
No, it's great to be, it's great to be part of a community where people like you, Bill, are working on stuff like this, so thank you.
I like trails, and this will be a really super trail, probably white.
Scott, do you have any comments? Did we lose Scott?
Scott, are you still with us?
Hang on a minute, John.
I was on mute. But I want to certainly thank Bill for this idea. I mean, Anita and I both have members of the Trisha disabilities, or, you know, we've been talking about where to go to trail now for some time, and technically comes forward a plan. I think it's just wonderful. We've got a lot of residents who I think are looking forward to this, you know, so they can get built.
Did you have one other question, John?
You said crushed gravel. I think we ought to thank the asphalt maybe.
You think asphalt would be better?
Yeah. It's free asphalt.
In the woods?
In the woods?
Hey, well, crushed gravel is going to be tough to go with a wheelchair, I think, unless you've got it compacted. It's got to be smooth, and it's got to be something that, because you get into crushed rock with those wheelchairs.
You know, the show, or on the Shobisky area, just put a pass over to the tiki bar at the Select Board's asking. And I actually went to the tiki bar last week, and it's very nice. It's, you know, large, kind of gravelly, but I don't know about asphalt in the woods.
Well, it's just, I mean, you're trying to think of a smooth surface for wheelchairs. I think, you walk on gravel, and you know how it moves. That's not very good for trying to motor through with a wheelchair. I don't bet, but just a thought.
Scott, did you have something? Did you want to add something?
I was just thinking that when we built the playground behind the front school, that we worked with that team as a commission to get the right type of materials. I always encourage, you know, building Healthy Westford as they look for this Trisha disabilities, you know, and that, because we've got folks on that. because we've got folks on that commission trained to respect standards, and they can help out with what it would work best.
Yeah.
I know of some that are gravel. When I called it gravel, that might not have been the right term, but there's one down in Concord at the Battle Road, and it's great for bicycles and wheelchairs. It's very smooth. But I sort of like asphalt myself, and I know there's a really nice trail from the Carlisle Library over to the school through the woods that is asphalt. It looks very charming, I think, so.
It might be, as Scott said, you know, to connect with the Commission on Disabilities in terms of what the materials they've used along with the playground.
Okay.
But in general, just a great idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, you have to vote, thank you. Can we have a motion to support this?
A motion to support the Healthy Westford Committee to develop a wheelchair-accessible walking path near Edwards Beach.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, our next item is a request from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee to support an act to reform the hate crime statute by Tram Nguyen, a petition accompanied by Bill, House Number 1819, for legislation to reform the hate crime statutes. Good evening, I'm not sure which one of you is presenting, so.
I'm going to kick it off, and Joe will be presenting it, so.
Okay, just for the audience at home, just tell us who you are, okay?
Yeah, sure, I'll do that. Thank you, Select Board, for inviting us here and giving us the opportunity. My name is Mamata Jagannathan, I'm the co-chair of the Westford Town DEI Committee. And along with me, I have my other co-chair here, and Joe, who is a member of the DEI Committee. We are here to, I'm going to talk through my script, because I could then fumble off, so. We, as the DEI Committee, feel privileged to be present here and present to you as per our charge to recommend and request the Select Board to endorse the Act to Reform the Hate Crime Statutes, H1819. But before bringing it to the Select Board here, we, as a DEI Committee, reviewed that act, understood what the act is, and then the whole committee endorsed it. So as the next step, we wanted to bring it to the Select Board to endorse this. Said that, I'm going to ask Joe to talk through the whole act and give you the insights to it. Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Joe Diamond with the DEI Committee.
You need to come up to one of the microphones.
By the way, I want to also thank Eric, who is the co-chair. I want to thank both Eric and Mamata for their leadership. We're really thrilled to be able to come to you today to talk about this. It's one of the many things that we think that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee can do to foster a strong sense of belonging, a deep sense of belonging in Westford. It's just one of the things. There are many things, and we are very active. But Eric and Mamata will, in August, I believe, give you a full briefing. The reason we are interested in this bill by Representative Tram Nguyen is that it crafts an effective response to violent bigotry. It's supported by over 40 legislators in Massachusetts, the State House, including Representative Arciero, who I spoke to a few days ago. The DEI Committee's support for this bill stems from the Select Board's charge, which is to discourage prejudice and discrimination against any person, group, or any other status protected by law on account of race, creed, color, income, religion, national origin, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, veteran status, age, or disability. And the reason I read that out, and we thank you for the charge, is that it's a comprehensive charge. But again, it's meant to discourage prejudice and discrimination, and we believe this bill does that. We also see this as an opportunity for the town to add to this comprehensive effort to support a legal framework that prevents and addresses violent bigotry. Again, there are many things that we can do, but I think a protective framework is really something that we should stand behind. Let's move to the second page. This is also supported by the Attorney General in Massachusetts. We see this as, in a time of increasing bias-related incidents and hate crimes around the country, this bill strengthens existing hate crime statutes to reflect their intended purpose, to charge individuals who target a person based on their membership in a protected class, provides clear definitions and gives guidance to attorneys, law enforcement, and members of the judiciary seeking to apply these laws fairly and correctly, clarifies what conduct is prohibited, and modernizes the scope of persons protected. It prohibits violent, threatening, destructive conduct, and it addresses mixed motive crimes. Remember what happened in Atlanta? That was sort of an observation about that crime against Asian-Americans, that it wasn't intended against Asian-Americans. But this law makes it so that even if a crime is perpetrated and has all of the markings of a hate crime, then it can be prosecuted as such. So, a word or two about Representative Nguyen. She family comes from Vietnam, has experienced this kind of hatred. Her father was afraid to exercise outdoors for a time because of what was going on. So, she's inspired from a personal level, but she's also been a legal advocate, and now is a representative, elected official. So that's our hope, that you'll endorse this and convey that support to the Judiciary Committee, who will, that will hear the bill in the fall. So there is time, and I think it would really speak volumes about sort of the depth of the commitment that this town has to DEI. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Tom.
Would you describe, just very, kind of a summary of what the changes were between the existing law and the new law?
Yeah, I will do that. I don't have sort of chapter and verse on that, but my understanding from the representative's office is that those were not clear, that they were confusing, and because of the lack of clarity, didn't provide sort of a framework to really address violent bigotry. The specifics of the language, I can certainly research, and get back to you on.
Other questions or comments? Scott, any questions or comments?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, as I, you know, read Joe's remarks, I thought it was, you know, quite nice and complete. I love that his defendants, you know, are positions based on the intent of the legislation that simulates and dreads violent bigotry. So absolutely, I agree with that position. My concern is, I'm not sure if it's the opinion of representatives or if it's actually in the bill. But if bio-motivation is not needed to be the predominant substantial sole reason for a bio-motivated crime to be prosecuted as a hate crime, now, I would agree that doesn't need to be the sole reason, and even greater doesn't need to be predominant reason. But when you're talking to things like, is a substantial reason, I get to be kind of a loosey-goosey kind of expression. So, I mean, the example I thought of was, you've got two individuals in a road rage, you have evidence, and, you know, it comes to physicality, and the individual in a fit of temper uses a upset against the other. Is that person now looking at five years in jail and $20,000 on a fine because he lost a temper? Is that considered substantial? So I, you know, I support the intent, I don't want to get too tied up on, you know, malicious, but, you know, I have a little bit concerned about just how much scope or deal we're giving to any kind of comment being interpreted as making otherwise mutually violent incidents into a hate crime.
So, Tom?
Just, I really appreciate the committee bringing this forward, and I understand there could be a lot in the bill, and there could be a lot of parsing of the bill and consideration of the bill to do. But as represented here, in terms of what the main improvements are and where the improvements are, you know, I'd feel very comfortable supporting that and would appreciate, very much appreciate you doing this work. So it's, I have a lot of respect for Scott's position. I know there's a lot of further thought beyond this, but in terms of, you know, supporting the intent, as you've laid it out here, I'm very much in favor.
I would agree with you, I certainly support the intent of the bill. I suspect when it gets to the Judiciary Committee, it's going to be discussed, and perhaps some of the concerns that Scott just raised will be discussed in that. I mean, I also think about, you know, with my legal hat on, is that, you know, when you're talking about discrimination and the standard under our discriminatory laws, it's always a substantial motivating factor. So my guess is, is that they took that language from discrimination law and put it into this law, and that's how they, that's how they reached that language in this law. But, you know, I fully support the intent. You know, this is, you know, this is part of the reason that we set up this, the DEI Committee. This is what we asked them to do, you know. And so the fact that you are bringing this to us tonight and asking for our support, you know, thank you so, thank you very much, you know, really. I think it shows, you know, the commitment that you folks have to what we've asked you to do, and I think reflects the commitment of the board.
If I could just respond to that, in particular, through the leadership of our two chairs and the committee, we took that charge to heart and take it very seriously and want to make sure that what we do is sort of broad and specific and sort of encourages what you've asked us to look at.
And if everybody remembers, I believe it took us three meetings to come up with that charge. We worked on that charge, you know, really hard to come up with something that was meaningful and that actually gave all of you direction.
There's one point I want to make about the process, and you make a really good one. This is the beginning, once the bill is heard, it's good to weigh in before the bill is heard or during the hearing, so that if it gets a favorable, it then can be taken up by the full legislature, which takes a long time. And the process itself is a process of inquiry that you described. So that this isn't, this isn't, this is really the beginning. I appreciate Scott's concern, but I think there will be lots of that.
Got a couple of comments. First of all, I looked at this pretty thoroughly, and one of the key things in the House bill says because of, and the way they define it is, conduct would not have happened but for the protected characteristic. So this is saying that it would not have happened, the incident would not have happened had it not been for the protected characteristics. So, that's laying it out pretty square, that says, you know, that tells you what hatred is and bigotry. And I think that's a good point in the law. The other thing is, the previous law was very kind of general, and we had just, you know, the punishment was very limited. This thing carries it to several different levels, up to and including life. If you have repeat offenses, that's a certain, you know, bodily harm and things like that. So this is pretty, I looked at it, I think it's very fair, includes. Just one other thing, I would suggest, if we are going to recommend this to the Joint Committee, that we also include mention of the Senate Bill Number 1051, which has been presented to the Senate, and that's identical.
That's the companion, yeah.
In language, that's the companion. And the Senate's concurred with the House bill, the House has concurred with the Senate bill. It's in the Joint Committee now. So I would not expect very much change from that. So if anybody's interested, those are online, you can read it for yourself. And it has changed the landscape significantly.
Great, any comments from the audience?
What is the Senate Bill Number, John?
1051. It's identical in language, so they're talking the same thing in both. I think the requirement for proof and everything else is there. I looked at it very thoroughly, and I would, I don't know what our recommendation is going to, what weight it's going to have, whether we could recommend it as a board.
Well, I think the vote tonight is to recommend, or is to, actually, probably is to support House Bill 1819 and Senate Bill 1051. And I guess would suggest that we send a letter to our state rep and our state senator, as well as the, whomever the chairs are of the Judiciary Committee. I don't know off the top of my head, I looked at it this morning and don't know.
Well, one other point, I think Senator Kennedy's either as a sponsor or supporter of both of the bills.
So is Representative Arciero.
I just didn't see him on the list when I, I think he is.
He is, actually.
He is, but I think that.
I think two days ago.
Okay.
But, um.
I didn't see his name on it.
I think it's important that we send a letter from this board to our state rep and our state senator, as well as the chairs of the Judiciary Committee. So, is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? All right. All those.
Good job.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that you get a copy of the letters that we sent to our state rep, senator, and the Judiciary Committee.
Please let us know if we can be helpful in any way.
We certainly will. And just for folks in the audience who are watching, we have asked the DEI to come back to our August meeting to give us an update of the work and everything that you've been doing over the last six months. And so, for anyone who is interested, tune into our August meeting, which is August 17. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the time that you had.
Appreciate this.
All right, the next item is a discussion of a possible proposal for a bylaw change to modify the date of our annual town meeting. This is my issue, okay, I put this on the agenda. You know, as most folks know, for years and years and years, our annual town meeting was the first Saturday after the Tuesday election. And then, I think about 12 years ago, 15 years ago, we changed.
It wasn't 15, because I was here, I think it was 12.
Okay, somewhere around there. We changed town meeting to be the last Saturday in March. And, you know, over the last, you know, obviously over the last two years, because of COVID, we've held town meeting in June. And I have at least heard from some folks from a finance point of view that it makes budgeting a bit easier if we push town meeting out till May or June as opposed to March, because there's more information, both on a local level and on a state level. So, all I want to, I'm not asking the board to make a decision tonight or anything. What, all I want to do is to bring it up for discussion again, to determine whether our various departments and committees are comfortable with town meeting, annual town meeting being in March, whether they would prefer to go back to May. I mean, one of the reasons that we initially moved it to March is that there was a thought that it would increase attendance if it were at the end of March versus the first weekend in May when people, when kids are playing soccer and sports, et cetera, et cetera. And it's always, of course, a really beautiful day. But it seems over the years that, in general, it really, attendance really hasn't changed all that much because of the move. So, all I'm suggesting is that we just take a look at it again and maybe, you know, I don't know, establish a committee again, which is what we had 10 years ago, to take a look at this, gather the information, bring it back to us, and see if this is something that we want to entertain, or if it comes back and says, no, everybody's really happy with the town meeting in March? Great, then we'll leave it in March. So, that's where, that's my suggestion, where I'm coming from. John?
I was on that committee.
I know you were.
Anyway, it had, we thought that it was going to change the attendance, and it really didn't, it didn't improve by moving it up to March. What it did do, it happened without quite a few of the seniors in town being there, because they were in the South. They'd gone, they'd taken their, they were on their winter vacation. So you saw a decrease in the participation of the senior population. And then they'd come back and vote, and they'd vote against something that we had done at the annual town meeting. And so I think the change, based on what's happened, I would be, as it stands right now, I think I'd recommend changing it, moving it back to May or June.
Like I said, I just want to get the input from town staff, committees, and also our residents. I mean, maybe we can, you know, survey our residents to find out what, you know, what they're thinking and what they would like. Anita?
I would, I would support a committee, or something kind of exploring this further, because I actually heard the opposite, that June was worse with graduation, graduation parties, or a lot of other extracurricular activities that take away a Saturday afternoon for the younger population. So it would be good to kind of also see the numbers of attendance over time, too, to just kind of check that out, or have the committee review it.
So I remember that committee looked at some other things than just changing that date. They looked at whether the town wanted to go to a representative town meeting.
It was called Representative Town Meeting Committee. And somebody recommended we go to Representative Town Meeting because of our population.
Right.
And it turned out to do that, we would have to elect 240 representatives, one third every year. So I can imagine us having a ballot with 80, first of all, finding 80 people or 240 people that would do it. They're not mandated to do it. They don't get paid to do it. And we looked at Chelmsford's experience and we were not impressed with that. And so we, we looked around at a lot of the different town meetings, different states and their experience and it always turned out that, you know, if you had 500 people in a town, 400 people would show up at a town meeting. If you had 5,000, you'd still have 400 people show up at a town meeting. It just seems like it falls off the bigger you get. We still don't get the increase. I'd love to see 1,000 people at.
Well, we have had over 1,000 when there's been something.
It's incident, it's incident dependent. But we did look at that about, you know, the summer and the kids playing and stuff. We looked at that and the reason we moved it back to March, we thought we'd get more attendance because what else are you going to do in March? Well, so.
In the South, I guess.
Yeah. So anyway, I think we should take another look at it. I'd agree with that.
Scott, do you have any comment or not?
No, I think that you and John have both hit the fact that there's, you know, a downside to the current date and, you know, that's why we thought we'd get really it there. I think, you know, we've learned now that the single most important driver for attendance is controversy of, of articles. People will show up for that and then leave again. So I think it, yeah, time to reassess. Did this change work out for the, for the better or not? If not, you know, from a budget standpoint, I think it makes sense to go back to the main one. But, but I'll be, we should talk about this as a town again and see where it falls out.
Ellen?
Ellen Hardy, 39 Main Street. My recollection is, actually, there were two separate committees. Even before the Representative Town Committee, there was a committee whose charge was simply to look at changing the date of town meeting. They did a super job and they did the kind of survey that you were mentioning. So when you appoint this committee, which it appears you're going to be doing, let's go back to both of those, both the work that your Representative Town Committee did. And I almost had the chair of the former committee off the tip of my tongue, but I can't get it right now.
I thought it was George Murray.
Chair of the Representative Town Committee. But there was another one. It was a league member and I can't remember who it was, but I certainly have it. It was in the town report.
Was it Lynn?
It was not Lynn.
Okay.
It was not Lynn. I'll get it. But I have a copy of the report. I'm sure it was in the town. But let's not forget that one too, because the process they went through in terms of getting input, not just from the Finance Committee who had strong feelings about it, but also from voters and from various constituencies. So I'll pull that up and get it to Jody to make sure we look at both.
Right. And I know they went to every committee because I was on the planning board at the same ti, at the time that was happening and they came to the planning board as well to ask us what, you know, for our inputs.
Hop on the air and be sure that whoever you appoint has access to that.
That would be very.
We all learn a little bit from history.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Angela Harkness, 15 Castle Road.
Who's our town moderator?
So as the new moderator, I do have as a goal raising our participation at town meeting, hopefully 1,000 people on a regular basis. So I guess I would like to see that as the driving factor behind whether or not we decide to change the date. What date is going to be, what date is going to engender the most participation? And I also think that the date itself is not the only thing we should be doing to drive participation. I think that's what happened before. We changed it to an earlier date to try and encourage people with kids to come so that it wouldn't interfere with their activities, but then we didn't do anything else. We didn't do any public education or about the issues or the new date or we haven't really been providing consistent daycare. I know we've tried, but I think we could do better with a lot of those things. So some of this seems irrelevant to this discussion, but I think it's all part of the same piece. And for this discussion, I, I think that the driving factor should be what date is going to engender the most participation by the public.
Anita?
I guess I, I know that there are other towns that also spread out their town meeting over a few evenings and just whether or not that could be added to the list for the committees to explore, not just one day.
Sure. Time of day, in other words.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom?
So are we tonight going to put together a charter for this or are we going to put it for next time?
I think we should put it, I just had this on for discussion for us tonight and to see sort of what the board felt and what you, what the sentiment of the board was. So it sounds like the sentiment of the board is to form a committee to take a look at this. So I would put, I would schedule this for our next meeting and during that time, we can hopefully develop a charter that we can work on and then present that. And then also discuss the makeup of the committee, you know, who should be on it, how many people should be on it and then, you know, obviously advertise for it.
I think it'd be really interesting if, to Angela's point, if we could stage it so we first had from community survey or own research or whatever, what would maximize community engagement? And so the boards had that on board when they were looking at balancing the issues of, because I, I mean, I remember from school committee and from many, all the committees, it is a huge cattle stampede to try to get your budget in place in time. That's a real issue, but I, I would want to make sure that you have the information of what's going to provide the most engagement when you're thinking about that so you're not prioritizing your own convenience in a way.
Right, right. You really need to balance them. So, so that would be my plan is to bring this back for discussion in our next meeting in two weeks and go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We are now at our next item, which is a request from the Town Clerk's Office to approve the 2021 special town meeting timeline. Folks have an opportunity to look at it? Do we have any comments or any? Does the moderator have any comments about the, about the proposed timeline?
I'm just kidding.
Okay. All right. Do we need to vote to approve it or what?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if you noticed, but you're basically opening the warrant at your next meeting.
Okay, we're opening the warrant at the next meeting.
Amazing to me.
Yeah, it never ends.
We just got done with the early and now we're starting another one.
All right.
It's like the elves the day after Christmas, starting to make toys again.
That's right. Okay. We have a request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to appoint Jerry DiBello as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a request from the Economic Development Committee to appoint Thomas Katarakis as a full member for a term expiring June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And last on our old new business is a request to approve the 2021 annual reappointments for committee and board members as listed in our meeting packet tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're at our eight twenty. Anybody have any board reports or updates? Okay, seeing none. We have minutes for approval and release for our regular sessions of May 11th, May 25th, June 8th and June 22nd of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Town manager's report.
Okay. So as you know, we did release and get back proposals for 63 Main Street and we are recommending that the board award the process to Diane and Charles Grandine and authorize my office to initiate a purchase and sale agreement.
Any questions or comments?
I, I don't know, Jody, if we could ask you briefly just to recount the purchase price, the subsequent value that the community's received from this and then the amount that's in this offer. Just, I, I think it's a, I think it's working out very well, but I just think it might help for everyone to hear those numbers.
So we purchased the property for $600,000 and we also appropriated another 100 for us to secure the property, put, you know, a temporary roof on it and take care of miscellaneous. We have not spent all that money. I think we have.
About $44,000.
About $44,000 left of that appropriation. We did carve off over an acre of the back of the property and that will be retained for municipal use. It could be a parking lot, it could be a drive-through, it could be a path, whatever the town ends up deciding at some point. And there is a historic preservation restriction on the property too, so that certainly binds the new purchaser to, to work within that. We did bring to the board on May 11th, if you wanted to set a minimum purchase price of the property, which was the assessed value, and that was about 322. Thank you, 322. And the board did vote in favor of that. So we released the RFP, we got two proposals. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Eric?
So we actually had about 10 different parties show up at the walkthrough we conducted and we received two proposals, one at $425,000 and one at approximately $359,000.
And so we are bringing to the board the higher proposal and everything looked in order and we had a committee or a group analyze it and so that's what we're recommending to the board.
Yeah, thanks, sir. I just want to make sure we recounted that we're getting that additional municipal land and we also got, I think, what the community was most concerned about, which is that that will maintain its historic nature going forward and so.
And single family home too. I don't think I mentioned that, so.
So, anyway, thank you for orchestrating that process and clarifying.
All right. Any questions, comments from the audience? I just want to thank the board for expediting this so quickly after the town meeting and it's exactly what I hoped would happen when the petition was put on the warrant article and I'm very grateful to all of you. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank our former moderator because she put up the for sale sign for us, so. And then a sale pending.
And then sale pending, right.
Thank you for donating that.
All right. So is there a motion to award the, the disposition of 63 Main Street to Diane and Charles Grandine and authorize the town manager's office to initiate a PNS agreement with them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Very excited. That's two now, 35 Town Farm and 63 Main.
We're in a roll here.
Check, check.
All right.
All right. So then I have some contracts. Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC to purchase an E1 E-Max rescue pumper in the amount of $690,000 as requested by the fire department. Cooling and heating specialist for a heat pump at the JV Fletcher Library in the amount of $22,073.75 as requested by facilities. American Alarm for support monitoring of security systems in town buildings, the amount of $46,000 requested by the Technology Department. Tri-Tech Software Systems for computer-aided dispatch software in the amount of $19,707 as requested by technology. CDWG for HP Chromebooks in the amount of $17,700 as requested by technology. Rave Mobile Safety for reverse 911 in the amount of $13,700 as requested by technology. Dennis Mayer Company for the redevelopment of the depot road well in the amount of $13,270 as requested by the DPW. Comcast for annual PRI circuits for the town Cisco telephone system in the amount of $13,000 as requested by technology. And Pete's Tire Barn for excavator tires in the amount of $12,981.8 as requested by the DPW.
Anybody have any questions about any of these? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Correspondence, and I know Anita has a couple of questions.
I was just wondering if you could provide an update or maybe figure out, tell us what the next steps are for that elevator and the.
Yeah, I'm going to let Eric tell you about that.
Sure. So we're actually still awaiting a response from Massachusetts Elevator Board on this particular lift. They wrote us back today and informed us that due to it being heavy vacation time for staff, they do expect to get back to us in the next couple of weeks. So until then, we're kind of in a holding pattern, just waiting to see what happens next. We believe once they go through all of the documents pertaining to our approvals, that this will be resolved, but we're just at their mercy now, waiting for time.
Did you have one other question?
I did. I just wanted to see if anyone else had questions. My other question was around this opioid bankruptcy thing. Could you explain that?
So I think this happened before you all were on the board, but several years ago, KP Law recommended that we join this class action lawsuit for our opioid problems. So we collected data on what our town had spent responding to overdoses and things like that and we provided it. So we're in this big class of communities that is kind of litigating this. The company, the Sackler family, I believe it's called, is going bankrupt because of this and so that's a standard form that's sent to us. But I did touch base with John Georgio when we got that and he said he doesn't recommend any action. First of all, the, the cost the town's trying to recoup is fairly small and we're fairly low on the list, but there's no action we need to take. It's a, it's just a group litigation. So we're hopeful we'll get something at the end, but so that's, that's the Cliff Notes.
And the Attorney General just, actually, it was announced this week, the Attorney General just had up until now been opposing the bankruptcy proceeding with the Sacklers, which is out of New York City. But she this week announced having reached a deal with the Sacklers and based on the deal that she's reached with them, the Commonwealth will agree to the bankruptcy proceeding in New York City because they'll be making changes and to the, to the plan and the program.
Thanks.
That's, yeah. I thought you hadn't been a part of that, so I understand why that was confusing. All right. With that, is there a, actually with that, with those, those two, those two exceptions, is there a motion to waive the reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I'm not recalling. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Scott. Thanks for joining us.
Good night, Scott. Take care.
Good night, Scott.
All right, and we are adjourned.